Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the meeting of the Housing Subcommittee. There are two items we'll be discussing tonight, excepting the Community Preservation Act, and then an update on the Edge Apartments. Both of these issues had been referred to the Housing Subcommittee by the full council. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Chairman Milonazza?
Here.
Counselor Elliott?
Here.
Counselor Mercia?
Yeah.
Three present.
Thank you. We're also joined this evening by Eric Slagle from the Community, I'm sorry, Development Services Office, and Gary Gordon from the Law Department. Thank you both for being here. We also have Jim Wild from his Meramec Valley Housing Partnership here, speaking as well, as well as Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman, Bezna Noon. Thank you all for being here. So why don't we get right into the Community Preservation Act? This is something that was referred to the Subcommittee. We had a discussion on it. We actually had a vote that was referred to the Subcommittee. So maybe as we discuss this this evening, we can talk about procedurally how we go from here. And I know that under City Council action, Eric did hand out a kind of a proposed vote as to what may be the best course for us to take. So if it's okay with my colleagues, I'll ask Eric to update the Subcommittee, and then we can open it up to the Subcommittee as well as people in the audience. So, Mr. Slagle?
Yes. So, as the chairman had mentioned, the full City Council had referred the matter of the CPA and the potential adoption by the City Council to refer to a referendum to the Housing Subcommittee. For those at home who may not be familiar or haven't been following along, the Community Preservation Act is an act, a state statute, that allows municipalities to adopt a surcharge of either 1%, 2%, or 3% onto the real estate taxes for the city, and then with the sole purpose of dedicating that money for certain open space historic resources and affordable housing uses. Participating in the CPA makes a municipality eligible for a certain percentage of matching funds from the Community Preservation Trust, which is funded through fees at the Registry of Deeds, fees on transactions at the Registry of Deeds. In the last, I believe it was five years or so, according to DeCau, who is the Register of Deeds, the City of Lowell has, through its various real estate transactions from Lowell property that was sold, has paid 5.2 million into the trust fund. And of course, the city wasn't eligible to access any of those matching funds because we have not adopted the CPA at this time. As we mentioned to the full council, and I'll mention again to the Subcommittee, the process for adoption, first, the City Council would need to vote favorably on a vote to put the Community Preservation Act on a referendum. The vote of City Council would need to include a certain information. The first piece of information they would have to include is the chosen percentage of the municipality, whether they choose a 1%, 2%, or 3% surcharge. And the second piece of information they would have to have is which, if any, of the three exemptions that are in the statute, the City Council would propose to adopt.
Those three exemptions are the residential, commercial, and...
Yes, so there's the exemption for property owned and occupied as domicile by low-income housing or low-to-monitored-income senior housing, and then the commercial exemption, and then the residential exemption for the first $100,000 of valuation for those types of properties. Connor Baldwin, who's the CFO, had put together some specific numbers based on the 2019 levy. So the 1% surcharge, the projected collection amount would be $1.24 million. The 2% surcharge, the projected collection amount would be 2.49 million, and the 3% surcharge would be 3.73 million. The estimated tax impact on a $350,000 home for each of those surcharges, for the 1%, the estimated tax impact would be $45 a year. For the 2%, the estimated tax impact would be $65 a year, and for the 3%, the estimated tax impact would be $97 a year.
It's my understanding, based upon what's coming out of the State House, that the trust fund was funded by the most recent budget approval. I want to say, it was a bigger number than I thought was coming out. I want to say it was $100 million.
So I did see that they were, it had been, when we last met on this, the budget wasn't at a point where it was now. So they were contemplating increasing, adding funds to the trust fund to make the matching much more robust than it has been for the last couple of years, as the trust fund has...
So our timing, assuming that we go forward, our timing would be good.
If we go forward, yes. It would appear that we would be eligible for a much larger matching rate than, over the past couple of years, as the trust fund had dropped in amount. But we don't know exactly what that would be at this time.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So if and when the City Council votes to send this to a referendum, it would then go to, be on the November ballot for an up or down vote by the voters.
Would we, procedurally, would we want to have a public hearing here in the chambers before we actually, as a way to get it on the ballot as a referendum?
I think in conversation with the clerk and the city solicitor, they thought the best practice would be to refer that vote, the vote adopting whatever exemptions the council chooses and the rate, to be to refer that to a public hearing, so that the public could...
Counselor Mercia?
Would this be a non-binding referendum question or a binding? Would it be binding?
If the City Council votes on it and puts on a referendum, then it is binding. And the only way to remove that would be to have it, to put it on the ballot again, to opt out of the CPA.
If I could, what if we, as a council and the community votes to approve the CPA at a 1% level, how would we go about if we decide to increase that down the road?
It would be the same process. You'd have to have a vote from the City Council, and then it would need to go back on the referendum again. So any change from what was initially adopted would require the same process again.
Thank you. Counselor Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Although you said, what is the revenue collected from the fees at the registry?
Yes, so...
Five million?
That was what had been collected over the past period of time from transactions that were in the City of Lowell. So if you sold your house sometime in the last few years, you paid a fee that went into the trust fund, and that money was then used by some other municipality who had...
Hundred or so communities that have approved the CPA, yes.
And it was gone. We had nothing to show for that money. So let me just say my philosophy, and you probably heard this yourself. In order to make money, you have to spend money. That is my philosophy. I know it sounds hard to understand, but in this particular circumstance, if we spend money, being that 1%, we will get an abundance of something for our city, whether it be fixing schools or open space, things like that. We talk about playground equipment that we need at Hovey Field. These are the things that it would probably help. So I know that it's tough to say to people, you know, we're going to put a referendum question for a 1% increase, which would be $45 more, but you're going to get something for your money. It's not like we're just throwing it into a bottomless pit. We are getting something for it.
Right. No, and as part of the information that we've been collecting, on May 1st, Connor Baldwin did send us information as to what project would be eligible in order to receive some of these funding. And again, if you look at what he highlighted in yellow, you look at the baseball field remediation over at O'Donnell, $750,000. You've got the City Hall roof repair. I mean, there are just things that, you know, we couldn't remove from a capital plan after we do with the funds from the CPA, if we choose to move down that road.
So for instance, if the City Council adopted a 1% surcharge, and we brought in $1.2 million, even if we got a 20% match from the state, that would bring in another 200-plus thousand dollars on top of the 1.2 million to spend. So we would have a larger pool to spend than the money that we took in from the taxes. So instead of, if it's on the capital plan, we are borrowing that money and paying interest on it to do the work that we do in the capital plan. If we did it through the CPA, we would be using those tax funds and then leveraging the debt to get a greater bang for our buck through the CPA. Even at a small matching amount, we're still better to earn 10% on your money than to pay 2% on your money, or whatever the bond rate is for a capital plan. So you're netting at the end of the day. It's a benefit for the city to do it, to fund projects this way. And it's not just city projects. It also, the CPA funds would also be potentially eligible for private projects as well.
My memory serves me, Register Richard Howe Jr. was here talking about just what you mentioned earlier about the monies that were collected in the city was not eligible to receive any of those. So again, before I open it up, if my colleagues have any other comments, we do have a proposed motion this evening that came from Eric Slagle. So again, before we get to that, I'm going to just open it up, and for anybody in the audience that would like to come up and say a few words. Jim, good evening.
Thanks very much. Good evening, everyone. I'm Jim Wild with the Meramec Valley Housing Partnership, a resident of Lowell. I live at Canal Place 1, 200 Market Street. And I just want to register my support for the CPA. One of the things that can be used with the funds that are raised are affordable housing. And something that could be creative and unique for Lowell would be to create a Buy Lowell Fund, or some type of down payment assistance program. The City of Springfield, for example, last year helped 112 new home buyers with a $2,500 grant. And we could do something like that, and it's a, and what I'm thinking about is something specifically to use as an incentive for Lowell people to buy in Lowell. In the homebuyer training classes over the past couple of years, we've seen a real trend of people from Boston coming to Lowell for the affordability. But the downside is that people from Lowell can't afford to buy here anymore, and they're moving out to Pittsburgh, Leominster, Southern New Hampshire. So if we had some type of program that was even just $2,500 or $3,000 a pop, specifically for Lowell people to buy in Lowell, we'll call it the Buy Lowell Campaign, or something like that. You know, and I know that there's lots of other playgrounds and great things like that, but the money can be used for different things, and it's a wonderful program, and I would push for 3%, but 1's better than 0. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Jim. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Colin Shanley. I'm an intern at the Meramec Valley Housing Partnership with Jim Wild, and I'm a UML Political Science student, been living on Varney Street for almost three years now. And I just want to also register my support for the CPA funding. I mean, I think it's the rare type of political measure that could really have broad appeal to a lot of different segments of the voting populace. I mean, I think people who, you know, care about parks and community spaces would support it. People who care about the rich tradition of Lowell would support it in preserving that. And people who care about what we're doing, trying to provide affordable housing for people, specifically low-income people here in Lowell, would support it as well. So while people might look at something like an increased tax on the referendum, it's not something that people will think, oh, this is just going to support one subgroup of the population. And there's really something for everyone here. And like you mentioned, I mean, the Springfield program, they're using home funding and CPA funding, and they're able to provide assistance to a lot more people than we can here in Lowell. The limits that the home funding has is a big restriction for us in CPA, would really open that up. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? Counselor Elliott?
I just had a question from, for Eric. When you were explaining the Community Preservation Act, excuse my voice, you had mentioned that the city, I think it was a quarter to five years, had contributed 5.2 million. So that goes into a trust fund. What's the percentage that comes back? Because it's not a one-to-one match, correct?
That's correct. And over the past, since the adoption of the CPA, the percentage that has come back has changed. It started out at a fairly robust percentage, and I don't know the specifics because we are not a participant of it, but I think it was something like 12% at the last round. I believe that that's what it was, was a 12% match. And it was dropping because the trust fund was being used up quicker than it was being replenished through the surcharges.
So 12% of the 5.2 would be coming back to the community if we adopted the 1% standard?
No, the 5.2 is gone.
I mean, moving forward, hypothetically, had we adopted the CPA five years ago that generated 5.2 million, we had adopted the 1%, the requirement on the levy?
Right.
Is that reimbursement or matching percentage, is that static? Is it based upon availability of funds?
It's based upon the trust fund, the balance in the trust fund. And it's based upon your surcharge, not the money that you put in. So you would get back 12% of the 1.2 million each year that your surcharge took in, if you voted in projects of that amount. So when the CPA is adopted, and projects are then approved to use that CPA funds, that is when the reimbursement comes in on those specific, that specific amount that's used.
So we put residents or people that had real estate transactions put 5.2 in, but we didn't leave it on the table. We never, not all of it, because we wouldn't have, if we had adopted it, we would not have recouped that complete 5.2.
Or, in the alternative, we might have gotten more than that back, because there are municipalities that put money in. So every municipality puts money in, right? But only 100 take money out. So anybody who's been in the program has, by definition, gotten out more money than they've put in, probably, because places like Lowell that didn't adopt the CPA basically put 5.2 million in the trust to be spread out among the 100. So it kind of all, it all depends on the amount of surcharge that you have. So some of the municipalities around Lowell have a 3% surcharge.
Did you indicate that the state supplements the trust fund with general appropriation money, or...
Well, I don't know that that's a regular thing, but I think that there was, I believe that Counselor...
I have it here, and the budget as of Sunday, which was filed, put $20 million in the Community Preservation Trust Fund. And without that money, the match would be about 11% versus what they were hoping it would be. So that additional $20 million, which I'm sure will survive, it's 100% of which each participating community would raise through its own property tax surcharge. So, and 101 municipalities actually supported the monies, that $20 million, going into the trust fund in the FY '25.
The one thing that I did want to mention that I didn't make clear earlier is, and I think Counselor Elliott had actually asked this question at an earlier meeting, if you want to opt out, so if we opt in, and then you want to opt out, you have to wait five years after the initial referendum. So if we opt in in 2019, we couldn't opt out until 2024.
Right, okay.
And that's just, you can amend it up, but to opt out, you have to wait a full five years from the initial referendum.
Okay. Is the Subcommittee at this point prepared to recommend to the council?
Yes.
And a percentage?
I would, I'm just throwing out there 1% to start, at least start small, see if, we don't want to scare people. I would like 3%, but that's me. But we're going to take in consideration the people that are on a fixed income, so I'm saying 1% would be better than nothing at all and losing all that money. So I don't know how my colleagues feel, but I would make a motion to do the percentage at 1% to start off with.
Okay. Is there a second?
Yeah, look, I'll second it, and I've said this in the past. I think in concept, and Counsel Milonazza brought some very good projects forward, that the Community Preservation Act, its matching, has done great things throughout the state. And I said, my concern is what was just mentioned by Counsel Mercy, what is the impact, knowing that the annual property tax increase, the levy increase certainly has an impact. And taxpayers are going to be faced with Lowell high school tax increase that has been voted and can be between $200 and $300, $400 or more, and then on top of that, another 1%. So I certainly would vote to put this on the ballot. People should vote on it, but I have concerns with the impact that it has. You know, Mr. Wild mentioned, it's, people have a difficulty buying in Lowell and the affordability nature of it. I'm just concerned with the impact and what this does. So, but let people vote, without a doubt. So I made that second.
Thank you, Counsel Elliott. So we have a motion, and it's been seconded. From a procedural standpoint, you did propose language. Again, I think Counsel Mercy's motion fits in with this proposed language. I know the clerk does have this language. Do you want us to, yes?
The one other thing I was going to mention is, we do need to have a conversation about the exemptions, whether or not the Subcommittee would propose one or more of the exemptions to the council. And again, those are the low-income and low-income senior exemption, the commercial exemption, and the residential exemption, the first $100,000...
But your numbers that you shared with us, the 1.24, assume that those exemptions are in place?
No, I think that, I think...
Connor?
Connor just took the levy and took 1% of the total levy. And there wasn't a detailed analysis of how much of those came from that analysis. So it may actually be a smaller, it may be a smaller number, but it also may be a smaller tax hit, because that doesn't, the $45 doesn't include, I don't believe, includes a residential exemption.
And I would support the exemptions as in the information that we received this evening, so we're going to include that.
Yeah, I think that's important. I think particularly the first exemption for our seniors and low-income, that if they're low-income and seniors now with marginal cost of living increases, this certainly is not going to help them. So I completely concur on those exemptions.
Okay, so the motion would reflect that we support the three exemptions as outlined in your memo dated May 28th?
Sure. If it's a motion, I'll second that.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Counsel Milonazza?
Yes.
Counsel Elliott?
Yes.
Yes.
3/8.
3/8, thank you. Anything else on the Preservation Act at this point? So when we report out at council this evening, we're going to recommend that the vote come back before the council, because we did have that vote that was before the council. We now have this, and then that gets referred to a public hearing.
I think, yeah, that we, as I understand, that we're, and I'll defer to the clerk, that we're going to refer this to a public hearing.
Yeah, I mean, the vote that got referred to us, we'll put it on for...
And then that gets referred?
And there'll be a new vote, I suppose, by the Law Department that will take, put it on for, referred to, back to this committee, and then from this committee that will forward. Actually, excuse me.
Yeah, it doesn't have to go to the...
Go to a public hearing, you know.
Correct, yes, okay.
They don't have to refer it back to us.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you, thank you. Counsel Elliott?
So as, when that vote comes in through Mr. Chair, to Mr. Slagle's administration, can there be a plan, I'm thinking ahead now, okay? November is, will soon be upon us, and we're going to have a full ballot. We're going to have candidate, school committee, we're going to have a question on changing the form of government, we're going to have the community preservation. Can you include a plan on sort of information and outreach when it comes to this? Because I think it'll be confusing to folks, and to get the merits and the impact will be important. And I'm sure you're thinking about, but just having a public hearing makes a lot of sense, but what are we going to do after to make sure people know?
Yes, and there's a, there has been some conversation among staff about exactly what's the appropriate way to do outreach, and whether or not it should come from the administration, or whether or not there needs to be a private group that kind of leads the charge. I don't know at this point if that's been solved, but we have some time before a public hearing where you can certainly sit down with the manager and try to come up with a game plan, and...
When you say private, hire somebody to do it, or an organization that may or may not have a vested interest in it?
No, 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 like, so the... Like, so the, the historical society-
Well, you know, let's cross that bridge when we get there.
Or a consortium of affordable housing groups that would, so who's going to be the lead in trying to get this passed? Is it going to be the city? Or is it going to be a group of interested parties who want to have the CPA passed, and they're going to do the legwork for it? Because it, I agree with you, there's a potential for confusion, and if we don't provide the appropriate information to the public, we're not going to get a true read on what people think. And I think there needs to be some thought process put into kind of how that is handled, whether it's a group of the city and then some, so like maybe Coalition for Better Acre is an entity that's interested in affordable housing.
Merrimack Valley Housing Partnership, right.
Yeah, or the Merrimack Valley Housing Partnership. Are there groups that are interested in participating in outreach to educate folks about this, about the Community Preservation Act and how that, how that works at this point in time? Because this isn't being proposed by a consortium of folks who are already proposed, that doesn't exist. But I think that we would need to have some sort of idea as to how the education piece is going to work before November, if we want to do this right.
No, I, that's exactly the reason why I raise it now, and I do, I think it's got to be, you know, it's got to be fair, objective information. I mean, there are organizations that will be proponents for it, I understand, as long as the facts are out there and the voter can make their independent judgment. I think that makes sense. And I do think it should, the administration should come up with a plan. And this is a city council issue, it's a government issue, and I think the government should put forward, maybe it's a fact sheet that goes out to all the voters. But I'm sure it'll be a combination, as long as it's out there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. The next item that we have on the agenda was actually referred to us as a result of a motion by Counsel Elliot, request city manager to provide a report regarding zoning requirements and police activity at the Edge apartment complex. So we did receive this back in May from Mr. Slagel and Superintendent Richardson. So if I could, if it's okay with my colleagues, I'd just like Eric to update this housing subcommittee on the status of the Edge apartments.
Yes. So as the council knows, as a result of Counsel Elliot's motion, we provided information to the council regarding the contemplated zoning violations, and the police department provided some statistics on incidents that were going on at the Edge student dorm. Subsequent to that information, we obviously sent the citations to the dorm. They and their legal counsel came in and met with the administration. They rectified the issues that were listed in the notice of violation, which were the three main issues. The first was the lack of 24/7 security presence that was required in the planning board decision and in the ordinance itself. The second was the lack of the required number of RAs living in the facility for the students. And the third was some issues with landscaping from the historic board. Those issues in communication with both the owner of the building, the management company of the building, and their legal counsel, those issues have been rectified. As Counsel Elliot pointed out, there was one kind of looming issue, which was the presence of non-students in what was a student dorm. At the time of the presentation to the council, that question was referred to the Law Department, who in the interim did legal research, Gary Gordon from the Law Department was the primary attorney assigned to that, and determined that based on their interpretation of the zoning ordinance, the language in the zoning ordinance, that indeed there was not, the non-students were not allowed to be housed at a student dorm. So we prepared a violation notice to go out to the Edge dorm indicating that that was indeed a violation of their special permit and of 7.8 of the, section 7.8 of the zoning ordinance. The Law Department has informed their council of that. They, not surprisingly, take a different interpretation of it. They've indicated that they will be providing their own kind of legal opinion for the city's review, but in the interim, they will be cited for a violation of the zoning ordinance for housing non-students in a student dorm.
On a percentage basis, how many non-students are in the building now?
I believe they, it was 30%.
29 or 30.
29 or 30% of the current students were not current, the current residents.
Residents.
Were not students.
And what's the occupancy of the building now? Was it somewhere in the order of 70%? Or is it higher?
I think that, yes, I believe that's the accurate, that's an accurate number based on there, somewhere around that, around that number. So we are going to-
That's ongoing.
Yeah. So they will be receiving a violation. We do anticipate that they will be reaching out with some info. Based on their council's representation, that they'll be reaching out to the city with a contrary interpretation of the zoning ordinance. Notwithstanding that, the city solicitor's position, the city council, I mean, the city's position is that that's a violation of their, of their special permit.
Counsel Mercy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Eric Slagel. Are we saying that we have a full-time management assistant that's living on the property to oversee any problems that could arise? Do we have someone?
They have multiple. But they're supposed to have one resident assistant per 50 students.
Okay, but they do have that.
And they do have that at this, at this time.
All right.
And they are required to have 24/7 security, and at this time, they do. And in addition, I believe they've reached out to the Lowell Police Department about the installation and access to exterior cameras at the facility to allow the police department to interface with the police department, to try to prevent that kind of incidence that I think were a concern to the council and the city, quite frankly, over the life of the project thus far.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Elliot?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So 70%? Is it 400 units?
Yes.
Is it 400 units?
400 beds. 400 beds, not units.
Beds.
147 units and 414 beds.
I'm sorry, I heard part of it, but the motorcycle, 144.
147 units, we were, I was advised, and 414 beds. But a number of beds are not occupied at this time.
Unoccupied, correct.
So can I ask, what is their interpretation of the ordinance or special permit conditions that could be interpreted differently? I can remember time, numerous occasions, them, you know, the proponents, owners coming saying, we want to be part of the college community, we want to be college students, college students, college students. And yet 30% of 414, or 70% of that-
So right now, they have about 200, 275, 280 residents. So 30% of that would be 75, 80 non-students in the building.
To me, that's a lot of students that are non, that don't-
Residents that are non-students.
Residents. So back to my original question, where is, in their opinion, a loophole?
Without their legal opinion in front of me, I could not tell you what they're, what they're-
What's the timing on receiving that? Excuse me. What's the timing on receiving that from their council?
We just spoke with the council today, and he indicated he's going to send us some kind of written analysis with legal authority. He was more keyed into raising an issue of fair housing, rather than disputing what was in the ordinance or the special permit. What he said today was, it raises fair housing questions, which we don't see and don't feel apply in this situation. So we're going to give him the opportunity to present whatever legal authority he feels that he wants us to review.
And notwithstanding that, we are going to cite them for a violation.
And what is, what are the implications of that citation? Is it, is there a daily penalty?
So typically speaking, for zoning violations, you, we provide the citation, the property owner has 30 days within which to bring the property into compliance. After that, they may be subject to a fine of up to $300 per day for violation. In this case, they also have appeal rights from a citation like that. They can appeal it to the building commissioner, then further appeal it to the zoning board, and further appeal it to court if they disagree with the citation. And whether or not we continue to cite them, or begin to fine and/or continue to fine them, depends on kind of where it stands in the legal process.
Is there any reason why we wouldn't do that? I mean, we think it's crystal clear that it's a dormitory, and it's not being used as a dormitory, and in my opinion, they are in violation. They've been cited for non-compliance. Is there any reason why we wouldn't begin that?
I can't see any reason why we wouldn't. Typically speaking, we don't fine per day as a policy, because we feel like that may be excessive. Not singling out this particular instance, we typically fine $300 per week. That's our typical zoning code violation, is $300 per week. But we have the right, as a municipality, that's clear and clearly in the ordinance, is to fine up to $300 per day per violation.
Well, personally, I think that we should. I think they're making, they made the investment, and perhaps the investment's not going as planned. They're still making money if there are 3, 280 individuals paying rent, and they're not in compliance. I mean, they, they broke the law. You know, sorry, this is what the ordinance says, and I feel that, you know, of course they're going to fight it. They don't want to pay, they don't want to, I'm sure they don't want to not be in compliance, but, but they are. So that's, that's just my opinion. I think that we, they broke the law, and they need to pay the price, like everyone else would have to.
We will be moving through the regular course of citation with this property, as we would with any other zoning violator.
I think that the report in May cited 164 police calls to the property over a certain period of time.
I believe that's correct.
Has that decreased as a result of looking into what's happening over there at that address?
So we don't have the specific numbers from the-
Police Department.
From the Police Department this time. So the Police Department was planning on doing two things. One, continuing to maintain a record, an accurate record. And number two, to provide, to try to look at similar-sized complexes, both apartment and dorm complexes, to give some sort of context to that. I don't have that information from the Police Department yet, but we can certainly, can certainly ask Kelly, Kelly Richardson, the superintendent, if they've done that analysis.
Could we do that? Because if they're saying they're in compliance, and this is a dorm, and isn't this further justification that, look how many calls we have here?
Right.
And we can look at other dormitories, but let's, in my opinion, 194 calls in that small window of time, no RAs. That's not being run like a dorm or other dorms. So I think that would be very helpful. And I'd be curious to know, you know, how many calls have taken place with their, should they have improved security 24/7, have resident assistance? I want to reserve judgment, but I suspect that this was supposed to be a benefit to the college and community, and it's just been a drain on resources. And it's taking away from other public safety issues that we should be dedicating, so.
So I do know that one of the, that, I'll certainly forward that information, that request to the superintendent, and I'm certain he will provide that information.
Why don't we put that in the form of a motion? I think that would make some sense. So if Counsel Mercy would second that.
Yes, second that motion.
Counsel Elliot's motion to get that update from the Police Department. Roll call on that motion, please.
Counsel Chairman Millenoz.
Yes.
Counsel Elliot.
Yes.
Counsel Mercy.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else?
So going forward, we will cite the property for the violation, and we'll reach out to the police superintendent to provide kind of an update on the numbers of the incidents that may have occurred at the property since the last time the council was updated.
Thank you. Counsel Elliot.
So just as a recap, what's your expectation on, you spoke to council today, we'll get a report as to the number of police calls. What is your expectation on getting a response from, from their legal counsel to our citation? And you had mentioned there is an appeal process?
Sure. So when we sent out the original citation, they did reach out very quickly to schedule a meeting with the administration, at which, you know, they had very good attendance from both owners and management and their, and their council. So they certainly heard that when we issued a citation, and that based on, it appears as though they reacted rapidly to the concerns that were issued in that notice, because they have been remedied. They were remedied fairly quickly after that. For this one, I would hesitate to speculate, though, just because this is a very different violation, and remedying it will be a very different road. Even if they choose to be compliant, that means they have 80 people that they would have to evict.
Well, that's exactly my point. Not only those 80 that they have to evict, but if they're at 70% occupancy, they're not, in my opinion, again, let's face it, they're not going to get, they're not going to fill the remaining beds with students if they can't fill them now. So to me, that's just going to exacerbate, particularly if, you know, they're trying to lay claim that there's a loophole in the ordinance when we think there is not. I just feel it's not going to go in the right direction with its intended use. That's my only point.
So I would anticipate them responding to the Law Department's inquiry quickly, very quickly, based on their earlier response. And as to the citation, we will proceed, and we'll let the chips fall where they may.
Thank you. Anything else to come before the subcommittee? Harry Nutt, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Second. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got hats coming up. I've got so many hats.